Next, Paul Adamson.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Please come to order. Please rise.
All together. Flag.
I gotta see it.
All together. Pledge allegiance to the Republic. Wichita State. One nation. The Republic. Wichita State. One nation. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to open the June 17th, 2020 Court of Selectmen meeting.
Motion's been made over a second.
Seconded.
Motion's been made over a second.
Further discussion.
Seconded.
We should be able to.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, we'll back get that fixed in a second. We'll have that fixed in one second. That's my last.
Don't push the buttons. Just push speakerphone.
Okay.
You got it?
Yeah.
Further discussion on the motion? Further discussion on the motion? Favor signal by saying aye. Roll call vote.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Richie Lombard, aye.
Josh, aye for Mike.
Okay. Thing on the agenda, we've got the distinguished health nurse. Debbie Murphy here, the health officer. She runs the town here in John Coolan and wants to give us an update on the thing. You want to come to the mic somehow? Is there a mic? Oh, he over here. There he is. Josh, thank you.
So, the update for Nahant this week, we only have had one new case, which brings our total up to 42. So, on Wednesday, I don't know if you know that the state publishes all of the updated data by town. So, I've compared us over the last few weeks to our surrounding communities because now the data also includes how many people in are being tested. And now that the test is so available, more people, you don't have to have symptoms, can go and be tested just for your own knowledge. So, the towns, I think what's interesting is the percentage rate of the population that tests positive in that town. As you can imagine, Chelsea and Lynn have the biggest rate with 37% and 26% of their residents testing positive. In Nahant, we've only had 40 positive cases, two probable cases. 309 people in Nahant have been tested. And that puts our rate at 12.94%. So, 12.94% of our people are testing positive. Compare us with Marblehead and Swamp Scott. In Marblehead, they have 228 cases, but 1,671 of their residents have been tested. And that brings their rate to 13%. But Swamp Scott had a big rise in the patient, in the people being tested this week. They had an additional 300 people this week be tested. Their total number of cases is 128, but they've had 1,523 people tested and they have the lowest percentage rate of 8.4% positive. I think that's directly related to the number of people being tested against the total population. But I thought that would be interesting data, just to see how we're doing. And overall, the whole state now, as you see, the numbers are coming down every week.
Thank you. John Coolan is on the phone as well.
Is he here?
He's on Zoom. We're dealing with, so John can, John's unmuted. We should be able to hear him over the micro, on the speakers now. John, can you, can you hear us? Can you speak up?
Sure. I can hear you. I can speak to our continuing to review our written plans that people have submitted. I have nothing extraordinary to report other than that we are continuing to assist local businesses to reopen in a way that is compliant and in a safe manner. I've assisted people in crafting their written plans and I think that things are going well. Things are going the way they should and that is partly reflected in the numbers, the cases for Nahant, as well as the, the level of participation and cooperation that townspeople and the business people in town have shown. It's been very gratifying to work with people. That's all I have for now, unless you have any questions.
The board have any questions of the town?
I have none. Thank you, John. Thank you, Debbie.
Josh?
You're welcome.
Questions?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, Deb. So, as you can hear, what we have on the speaker here are folks in communicating through the Zoom, the online Zoom application. Okay. So, we're not hearing ourself over this, over this. These microphones are playing into the TV and playing into Zoom. So, we're, we're still working out the bugs a little bit, but it's, we're getting there.
Thank God this didn't happen on my watch.
Yeah.
You'd be in big trouble.
Yeah.
We've been fixing this for six weeks. How much we spend on the communication system? For 55,000 and we still haven't got it right? Hello? I won't bring it up.
This, this is going well. We actually have, you can actually see the screen pretty clearly through, through the Zoom and on our TV channel for the first time. It's not just blurry faces and, but this is our first time using the new system, so. I'll just also add that Evan, John have been doing a phenomenal job. Dan Scrip as well, reviewing a lot. We've, a lot of the recreation programs, a lot of the businesses in town have been submitting plans to us as far as how they're going to open and comply with the guidelines of the state. And they've been reviewing them and responding and getting people open as fast as they can. So, we do have our, you know, playgrounds are open, courts are open, parking lots are open. And with our numbers being the way that they are, and if they continue that way, we, you know, we'll look forward to taking the next step as soon as the governor starts Phase Three. So, that's, that's all I have for an update on coronavirus.
Okay. Any questions? Josh?
Nope.
Opening comments, Mark?
Tony, you want to go first, try?
Yeah. So, as I mentioned, we're, we're, tonight is, we're doing things a little bit different. We have, where, this is our first meeting back here in the Town Hall. That, given that it's your last meeting as a Board of Selectmen member, we felt it was important to have it here in the Town Hall. And we are also broadcasting on TV and through Zoom. We have a few presentations for you, Mr. Chairman, that I'd like to get through, if it's okay with you, I'd like to get through our agenda and, and get to that and save that for the end. So, I'd like to switch around our agenda a little bit as posted. Do citizens forum first.
Yep.
The election being this weekend. For anyone tuning in, if you tune in late or don't have a chance to, you know, get onto the microphone during this citizens forum, we'll be having a meeting next, early next week. New selectmen and we'll get, we'll get them on the agenda for that meeting. So, we are meeting right again, right around the corner. I also wanted to quickly mention, we got a request from the Finance Committee to do a financial analysis on the impacts of the Northeastern Development, Northeastern University Proposed Expansion Development. We provided that scope of work to KP Law to have them review it. They actually have folks in-house that do a lot of that work for other communities. So, they will be taking that, taking that on. They have the scope of work and hopefully we'll get a response from them by end of the month or early July. And then I wanted to talk quickly about Election Day this weekend. I'll be doing, I'll put a robo-call out tomorrow. The, you still, for those who want to vote early, you can come into the Town Hall tomorrow or Friday to fill out an absentee ballot. If you got an absentee ballot in the mail already, you can submit that on Saturday until the polls close at 8:00. Saturday polls will open at 7:00. From 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And the polls will be actually up here in the main hall. We'll have, folks will be entering in the ramp entrance behind me here on the west side of the building, exiting the front door. And we'll have it similar to what people are experiencing when they were going to grocery stores where it's a line spaced out by six feet. We'll have people lined up in here and voting will be done here properly socially distant. We'll put that information out through a robo-call as well tomorrow.
I wanted to report, I said at the last meeting, I report back on the, the status of the negotiations we've been having with Northeastern. I have a brief statement I like to make and I can probably follow up on Tuesday, we're meeting again, because I know we're trying to rush through this a little. I had one meeting with, that included Nahant Town Council, Town Administrator, and several members of Northeastern. The purpose of the meeting was to explore whether or not there was a basis to negotiate. Although pursuant to an agreement between both parties, I can't, I cannot explicitly comment on the details of that meeting, I can say that I informed Northeastern that the town was willing to work with them to find an alternative solution that would allow them to pursue their expansion plans. Northeastern informed me through Town Council that they were not, they did not see a basis to continued negotiations on that basis. I then asked Town Council to ask Northeastern if they were interested in another line of negotiated settlement and I'm waiting to hear back from Northeastern on that. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Josh?
Yes. So, the Board of Selectmen received a letter from the Planning Board last week, I guess, and raising some concern about the FEMA flood maps and how they were approved a few years back. And they requested a joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. So, maybe Tony, you can, Joe can set that up sometime in the future?
Yes, certainly.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
If you have any opening comments, then I can walk us through citizens.
Say my opening comments to the end. So, real quick.
All right. So, then can we move to citizens forum then?
Yes.
All right. So, I don't have anyone, anybody that's on Zoom. If, if you, if you have any questions, you can type it into the chat, but I don't have any, anything up written right now. But if you would like to speak over the microphone, just unmute yourself and we'll be able to hear you. Please state your name and address. All right.
They're still at the beach.
As I said, we can, we can, if anyone comes, comes on later and we can, we can, we're going to be meeting again Tuesday.
We can address it then.
Yes.
Anyone in the audience, citizens forum would like to say anything? Give you an opportunity to speak? All right. We have some very distinguished individuals here, obviously in front of me. I'm going to invite up the Mayor Lynn, Tommy McGee. I know he wants to say a few things and on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of the town of Nahant. You've done a great job for us. Tommy, you and your father, all the years I've been on this board, anything we've asked you to do, you've done. I just wanted to say thank you. Going to come up and?
Thank you so much, Richie. And it's, I wouldn't want to be any other place than here tonight. And recognizing, imagine 40 years of commitment to this town. It's, it's unbelievable. And we really had some great opportunity to work together for over 23 years. I can't believe where those years went. 23 of those. I'm almost over half of the time that you've been doing work on the town, but I know that you worked closely with my dad and your commitment to this town is unmatched. And it was such a pleasure and honor to have a chance to work with you over the years and, and make this town such a great place. And that was your.
Your dad and you have done so much for the town of Nahant. Anything we've asked you for, especially at the state, we received. It was no question. You went to 100 and 200% all the time for the Board of Selectmen and the tax, taxpayer. And I'll be honest with you, you've been a great representative. And I, on behalf of the board, I, you know, step nine, I just, we really appreciate your support and your dedication to the town of Nahant. I want to thank you.
Thank, thank you, Richie. Thank you very much. So, you know, it was, it was such a home for me, you know, representing the town. And I see my, my two representatives that represent the town, Senator Creighton and Representative Capano, they're doing amazing work. But this was, this is a second home to me and, and has been and continues to be. And it, it just was a pleasure to be able to represent this town in the legislature. It's a very special place and it's very lucky to have you over these years to do the great work you've been able to do to continue to make this a town a place people love to live in and people love to look to as, as, as a kind of place that's really special. So, I'm honored to be here. It was great to work with the town, but more importantly, it's just an honor, honor you. And I have a citation that I'd like to present to you from, in my new role as Mayor of the City of Lynn, not so new anymore. And we do have a little bit different impact from what's happened with COVID-19. It's been a real challenge. But, you know, as, as you work in the town, and I know all of you are working on it, we're all working on this together. And I know we'll get through this together by, by continuing and do the right thing and make sure we're all safe. So, but I'm, I have a citation as Mayor of the City of Lynn, I'd like to present to you in recognition of over 40 years of, almost nearly 40 years of service to the town as a member of the Board of Selectmen. And I was talking to Mark earlier, if you look around the Commonwealth, I'm not sure it'd maybe be on one hand, the amount of people that have been serving a town in that capacity for so many years. And you really set the standard. So, congratulations and wish you the best, good health and happiness as you move on. And I said to you earlier, you're, you won't be in that chair, but you'll definitely be around, making sure your voice is heard. So, wish you the best, Richie. Congratulations on everything you did to the town.
Thank you very much. So, you also have Senator Creighton and Representative Capano here as well?
Thank you. Yep. This is the first citation I've given out in so long. I'm a little rusty, but Richie, I thought this was your night. You're giving a better speech about Tom McGee up here. Jeez. But it, it's an honor to be here today. And as I look out in the crowd, it's, it's hard to see some of the faces, but so many people in this room, you introduced me to, Richie, including your lovely wife Bonnie, who's been such a great friend and, and a lot of the relationships I was able to build in Nahant as a state rep and now as a senator were through, through you. And I, I had an opportunity in Lynn to serve in municipal government for six years as a city council. And those are some of the hardest years, it's the hardest elected job I've, I've had. And being on the ground level, if you do the job right, you're, you're working, you know, nights, weekends, you're, you're pretty stressed out. There are a lot of tough decisions to make in, in over 40 years. I did six and I couldn't take it anymore. You, you made it all the way, I exaggerated on my citation. I said 40 years. You might be a little short, but, but as much as it was hard work, I'm sure the, the honor and privilege and the relationships that you've made and the people that you've helped certainly make it all worthwhile and certainly must be a, a special feeling. You really should be proud for all the work you did. And, and also just thank you from the delegation, knowing that on any issue, large or small in Nahant, we could always turn, turn to you and to your colleagues on, on the Board of Selectmen. So, I don't need to read the citation. It's the same words, but congratulations. We're still going to harass you though, so I don't think you're off the hook. All right. Thanks.
To my colleague and friend, state rep Pete Capano.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. It's an honor for me to be here. You know, it, you know, with everything that's going on with the, I felt like I was just starting to get to know everybody. And we're like a three-month lull here where I haven't seen anybody. It, it really is an honor for me to be here. I spent 14 years on the Lynn City Council. I know 40 years is, is incredible. It can be a thankless job, but it can also be a very rewarding job. And, you know, you're a real tribute to the human spirit, tribute to yourself, everything you've done for the town of Nahant over the years. And I think people really appreciate it, you know. What can you say? That, that is a long time. You dedicated your whole life to the town of Nahant and I think people really appreciate it. I have a citation from the House of Representatives signed by the Speaker, and I want to wish you the best of luck in all future endeavors, Richie.
Thank you.
I could, Tony, I'd like to say a couple of words, Richie. You know, 40 years. It's wow. Yeah. I mean, that's a record that certainly won't be broken in our lifetime. And I don't think it ever will be. You know, you don't, you don't sit in this chair for 40 years because you're lucky. You sit there because, for 40 years because you do the right thing. And Richie has always done the right thing. I spent nearly 20 years working with Richie as Town Administrator. And I wouldn't have lasted two years if it wasn't for his guidance, his advice, and his friendship. Richie was always someone I could count on for support and encouragement. And I wouldn't be where I am today if it wasn't for you, Richie. So, I want to thank you for that. We've seen a lot, you've seen a lot in this town. Lizards, Bradleyville School, Johnson School, Doggy Beach. We've seen, he's seen a lot. And he's always gotten through those times with dignity and grace and the respect of the people in town. Your love for this town is unmatched. We didn't always agree on everything we voted on, but I always knew that you voted for me hot. And the last thing you questioned was, what is best for the town? You know, future generations will look, look back and remember people like I have. The people like JT Wilson, John Lowell, Clarence Sears, Chief Lanfair, Charlie Kelly. Now you're on the rolls, Richie. People will be thinking of you when, when those names come up again. Certainly if there was a, if it was in Nahant Mount Rushmore, you would be on it.
We, that can be arranged.
I know that, I know that our next meeting, our TV ratings are going to plummet, Tony. For sure. But maybe Richie can join us on Zoom, live and some things up. I know, but seriously, on behalf of all of the people in this town, thank you, Richie, from the bottom of our hearts. And thank you for your advice and the guidance over the years. And thank you for being such a good friend. God bless you.
Yeah. Your record's safe with me. I'm sure no one's ever going to come close to what you've done for this town. And I was thinking about it yesterday and I'm going to be 60 this year. And I thought Richie Lombard has been a selectman my entire adult life. That is incredible. I mean, you are the selectman. The town will always remember you as the selectman. And so, on behalf of literally generations of Nahanters, thank you. And, you know, for me personally, thanks for being an example of how to, how to do the job and do the job right. So, I appreciate it. Thanks, Richie.
Well, before we get, I'd like to say a couple of words too, if you don't mind. I, you know, I, I've only.
You sent me the speech.
Yeah. I, you know, we've only been working together for a couple of years, but, you know, growing up in this town, your reputation, your involvement in the town, it's, you know, it feels like I've been working closely with you for much longer than that. And, you know, I don't, I don't know really what to say other than you've been, you've been a mentor to me, just like Mark had mentioned, since day one. And you've, I can always, I always call and see, see what's going on. You always, you always know the backstory. You always know how to navigate through a certain issue. So, I really appreciate that. That definitely isn't going away. I'm still going to be calling you to know, know some backstory on some things. I don't know what, you know, the hot issues were when you first became selectman. I wasn't even close to being born yet. So, you know, but, but I've, you know, I'm, we talked about in department head, in staff meeting, you know, we've talked about your leadership, you know, every department head that has, or staff person that's worked for this town has always said good things about their relationship with you. I know that the department heads now are, are going to miss you too and we're all going to miss you. And we all put together a little something for you, present to you a gavel on a plaque here. Says Richard J. Lombard, thank you for your dedicated years of service to the town of Nahant.
One more thing I'd be remiss to say, because I've, have had my time in public service also. There's one person I want to recognize that I should have earlier, and that's your wife, Bonnie. She has a history of this also. And also she's always held your back. And sometimes I'd have to go around you to Bonnie to get, to get the right vote. But Bonnie, thank you for letting us have Richie for all of these years. Thank you so much.
If it wasn't for her, I probably wouldn't be sitting here. She's, she's been my backbone. Kind of sad thinking about. God almighty. Never thought this night would come. Of course, I love the town of Nahant. I did everything for the town of Nahant, no matter what the decision had to look. But we went through some crazy time, a lot of crazy times. We got through them. And my backbone is Bonnie. She stuck with me and guided me and advised me more than you know. She's in, she's much smarter than I am, believe me. She's very bright and she gave me a lot of good advice. Ateya and all my friends too. I see him out here, sitting here. My brother John, of course, he gave me advice every day for 40 years. He was always giving me. But I appreciate it very, very much. And thank you. Thank you, Mark. Tony, you've been a great town administrator. I mean, really, it's been a pleasure to work with you. You've got a great demeanor about yourself, the way you handle things. You're very, you know, low-key, you get things done. People enjoy working for you. You know, the department heads, they enjoy you, the way you handle things. It's been a great, you know, great. And working with Josh and Mark too has been just an honor because they're two great gentlemen. Especially you. And especially you, Mark, I've 17 years, you know, with town administrator. You, you did a lot. You did so much. And it was just a great, I just, you know. I remember the night, you know, when your mother and father, especially, were so proud of you, just getting on the board and elected. I remember those nights very, very good. Now we got young Josh over, he's learning quickly, and he's taking control, and he's doing a great job. So we've got a good, good team, got a good team. I think you'll have a good team coming forward too. I'm proud of you. I'm proud of all of you. I'm proud of your department heads. They've done, I see Zach, you know, he's out there, Superintendent Public Works, the police chief, you know, the fire chief, I think the fire chief, yeah? There is. And there's the police chief. Great department heads. They've done a fantastic job. Each of those departments itself have done a great job. We're going to honor one of our police officers tonight, which is another great individual. But I mean, your department heads are the backbone, and they really, they really take care of you, and they support you, and they, and their teams, the public works, fire and police, people don't realize what they go through, how they do it, and how they handle problems in the town and the heart, very quietly. No one even knows, don't even know some of the things that go on. But they keep everything right in-house, and I'm very proud of all three department heads. I see this guy, I'm running out of time, he's, he's out there weed whacking, you know. I says, oh my God, what a new superintendent, fantastic. Fire chief, he's running around getting all these grants. It's like, holy mackerel. And of course, the police chief, what a team he's got going, you know. We're going to honor one of his own tonight, in a few minutes. Just a great, great support team, great support staff. It's a great town to live in with that type of management and charge. And we have, you know, other cities and towns, no matter size, have problems, but we, we really, we really, they handle things in-house. And they don't let it outside, and they keep it in-house in each of their departments. And I've never had, you know, all my 40 years, the things, even the negotiations on contracts, they're very, very minimal, and they, and they, we always settle the contracts, we make sure we give them fair raises, and we give them what we can. And they know it, and we don't, you know, say anything different. We always give them, always the best. And then I represent it in the Senate and House, and I tell you, it's like unbelievable. Tommy McGee, I mean, I worked with his father. You gave so much to the town, you and your father dad. It was like, you know, God, we, you know, now we got the young Senator in the state, I mean, just come over here and help us, and the new congressman. I mean, the whole thing is nice. It's just a nice, we've got great representation, both in the House and the Senate. And it's like unbelievable. We've been so lucky with the talent, you know, representing the town and the heart. I mean that, it's just unbelievable. Other people have, in-house fighting, if we have a problem, we go to them. We have a quick meeting somewhere, maybe usually it's the Hawthorne in Swampscapes. We go out of town. But it's just a nice feeling, the representatives that represent the, us in the House and the Senate come through for us. You know, we're right up there as far as funding goes, you know, against any, any city in town. Even though out of the 351 cities in town, we're the smallest, we rank, I think, number two in the state for getting grants and money. And I, thanks to you three back standing back there. Thank you. I'm glad we're negotiating with Northeast, and I hope we get that screwed away too, because that's, that's kind of a sore thing on my side. I hope, I hope they come around, I really mean that. You know, I, I think they will. Mark's got a great, great team, negotiating team, and he, Mark knows what he wants, and they, and they know what the town wants. So there's no misunderstanding what our positions are up in Northeast, and I just wish it was solved, but Mark's here, and Josh were here, and Tony, they'll make sure it's done, and then the new selectmen will go, you know. And I think that will be, that will be settled, I think that will be settled into our favor. I believe that. And I wish you well on that. And if I can help you in any way. Okay, we got, can I just, one more special?
Go ahead, sir. This moderator is here and would like to say a few words, if I can invite him up.
I was just going to talk, I just saw him back there, and I said, I gotta, I can't, I can't let him go. I've distinguished moderator for years, one of the best ever in the state. He's been recognized as the best moderator out of the 351 cities and towns, seven times, seven times at Kent, you know? Maybe 10, Tommy says 10.
I'm going to be real quick. I mean, we've heard today about Richie Lombard, the selectman. But all I'm going to talk about is Richie Lombard, the man, the man. So he is a Marine. He was a Marine in Vietnam, fought in Vietnam. And we've had a couple of occasions, well, first of all, I have to say, the guy is a natural-born leader. If he goes, you got to go with him. It's just as simple as that. You don't really have a choice. For example, all right, because of his leadership qualities, he rose to be the Vice President of Dial Corporation in the United States. That's a fantastic position to be in. But it's even better. Dial Corporation is located in Phoenix, Arizona. Where was their Vice President of Sales operating? Nahat, Massachusetts. Not everybody can get that kind of golden rule. So he ran, he ran his whole operation out of here. But the thing that I really want to tell you about is two occasions on which we got to see the Marine in Richie Lombard. The first was in 1976, just before the Memorial Day Parade. Richie had arranged to get a combat helicopter to come in to drop the wreath at the war. And they came in the day before, and they went to the party the night before. But the thing that I, struck me was out at East Point, they had the copter come in, and they were getting ready for something, and Richie brought them in like he brought in a combat copter in Vietnam. I just almost fell over. He just had complete command. Those guys knew exactly what he had in mind, it put them right, it was fantastic. And the second time we got to see the Marine in him was a few years back when Molly had a significant birthday. And my present to her was to take her and a whole crew to the paintball contest place in Boston. So we had the whites versus the greens, and we were on the white team, and Richie was on the white team. And he was our platoon leader. Did we win? Yes, we won. We won so conclusively that some of our relatives that were on the green team are still not talking to us. Richie, congratulations, you've done a wonderful job. You've always tried to do what's right, and that's a great thing to be.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Here we go. Meeting minutes first.
You said approve some minutes?
Yes, please, yes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the, excuse me, I'm a little ahead of myself. Minutes then?
Number four.
Okay. I move that we approve, oh, Josh, it's your motion.
Josh, yeah.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the June 3, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Richie Lombard, aye. Motion passed unanimously.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the votes as written and incorporate such votes into the minutes of this meeting.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just quickly, I have for folks that are on, watching online or on TV, I have the written motion up on the screen.
Right.
This motion, it's an annual motion that we, that takes place to, that the Board of Selectmen authorize our borrowings for fiscal year '21. And if you'd like, I can go through them real quick, but they're, they're, they'll be incorporated into the minutes, and they're on the screen, so.
Further discussion. Hearing then, all those in favor, single by saying aye, roll call vote.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Richie Lombard, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next.
Want to invite Chief Dwyer up?
Yes. Chief Dwyer? Would you please bring up Sergeant Schultz? He's got the lieutenant's badge, he's got the lieutenant's badge.
Yeah.
He's supposed to get it tonight. I had the, or someone took the badge, we're supposed to give you the badge tonight. That's all right.
I want to start out by saying congratulations, Richie. Richie and I have a 30-year relationship. Richie appointed me 30 years ago. It's probably one of the, one of the reasons why I'm here. Richie had a big part in getting the Lynn kid over in the heart and become a police officer. And I, I thank you for that. Richie also, along with the Board of Selectmen, Mark Cullen promoted me to sergeant. Thank you for that. And they had the confidence meeting in 2010 to appoint me as the chief, and thank you for that as well.
By the way, you've done an outstanding performance, performance, you hear me, not the job, a performance as sergeant and chief.
Thank you.
Okay? I mean that.
How they do as patrolmen, all right?
Well, that was kind of sketchy. You did a great job.
Yeah, thank you. And Richie's been a supporter of law enforcement, public safety in general. He was, he always supported us, and we're out there on the weekends and dealing with what we deal with on the weekends. He'd be driving around and, you know, asking if everything is okay, we have enough help, we have enough money. He was, he's always supportive to the officers. He, if, if there was something we needed in the police department, he'd listen to us. He always, you know, he always made sure we got what we needed. Again, you say, you talk about me as the, you know, done a great job. It's not me, Richie, it's the people that work for me that make the difference in this town, and they work hard. And I need, I need to make sure you're, everybody's aware of that. We have a hard-working police department, compassionate police department. And, but I just want to thank you, Rich, for all your support over the years. You've been, you've been great. He's been chasing me around for 20 years looking for a badge, a gun, sheriff, and a police ID. And so far, I've held it off, we've been good, so. Now that he's leaving, I definitely don't have to give him.
Joe Manley gave me the badge.
And I took it back.
And no, no, Bonnie took it back, gave it to you. She says, I, you know.
So Richie, with that being said...
We liked the blue lights I had on the car, and I was stopping people in the cars with blue lights.
So with that being said, you know, good luck and congratulations, and enjoy your family and their life. Sit back and relax and watch everybody else take over.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I enjoy, enjoy the relationship, not only personally with you, but your department. Your offices are outstanding. They do a good job, you've hired the right people, and here's the product of one of them coming up here tonight. And he's another individual that's just excelled. You talk about, you know, sometimes you hear, I do, from police officers, giving tickets and cars away, and you know, and I get them, and I, you know, but your father would be proud of you. I mean that. You know, I remember, he was a patrolman, and they were in the reserve, father, and I think we appointed the sergeants, Dexter, of course, your father, and Eddie Locke, same time. And it was, you know, two great individuals, but you, you, you shined through your career as a Nahat police officer. And I'm very proud that you're getting promoted to lieutenant tonight. I'm very proud of that. Congratulations.
Welcome. Thank you for taking the time out of this busy meeting to allow this to happen tonight. It's the future of the Nahat Police Department. Things change rapidly. Like I said, I've been here 30 years, and it goes by very quickly. Tonight, we're going to promote Sergeant Schultz to Lieutenant Schultz. I've been working with Steve for over 15 years, I've known him for longer than that. Steve's a dedicated officer, he's from town, he's dedicated to the job, he does an excellent job. He has a, he has a work ethic like I, I, I should say, like I do. I mean, that's why we get along so well. Steve is, Steve is going to bring a lot of bright light to this position. He's going to, he's going to help me on the day-to-day operation, which we need. I need somebody under me like Steve that I can rely on. Steve started his career in New York City, as a patrolman in New York City. Then he ended up in New Hampshire, New Market, correct? And he came to us in 2002, 2002. And he was promoted to sergeant in 2006, and now we're going to promote him today to lieutenant. Steve, like you said, we've had, we've had a great working relationship over the years. It's going to get better, you're going to get, we have to work close together, and I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to the future of the Nahat Police Department, and this is the future. A lot of changes have happened over the last few years, and they're going to probably continue to change. But he's been here his, his whole career, and he plans on retiring here. And this is what, this is what we look forward to, promotions and people that want to spend their career here. So without ado, this is it. We're going to swear you in tonight as lieutenant.
Yeah, the quips here. Here she is, right here. You want to get him, get him up and swear him in?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to make a motion.
Oh, no, I was going to make the motion.
I got to see how the vote goes.
You want to make, who's making, make the motion?
I don't know about this vote, are you going to vote for?
We better get this over with. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Sergeant Stephen R. Schultz to the rank of lieutenant within the Nahat Police Department.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, further discussion?
Yes. I know from personal experience that Sergeant Schultz is extremely vigilant. I was thinking about one time several years ago, when there was allegedly rolled through a stop sign.
Not you, Josh.
Sergeant Schultz pulled me over, and I handed him the stuff, and asked why. And he came back and, and, you know, said to me, you know, that was the most polite response I've ever heard from someone I pulled over. So thank you for being kind to me. And I know a lot of other people appreciate your professionalism.
Yeah, congratulations, Steve. And I'd like to say, what Richie said, your father Dexter would be so proud of you now. I remember you coming in in 2002, you moved right up the ranks, and I'm glad you've decided to make this your home and stay, so congratulations.
And I too, Mr. Chairman, would just like to say, I'm extremely proud and excited to be part of this moment. Sergeant Schultz is, he leads by example. The rest of the department looks up to him, he's a great, great leader there. I know Chief Dwyer trusts him unconditionally, and it's well-deserved. Congratulations to you and your family.
Appreciate it.
Very proud.
Your mom and dad would be proud of you. And you know, there was one of the stats I got ahold of, you didn't realize, Chief Dwyer didn't have it. And, you know, there was one of the stats I got ahold of. You didn't realize, uh, Chief Dwyer didn't have it either. The warnings you issued instead of a ticket. To me, that's, that's a fantastic, you know, job. I mean, some, some people deserve the ticket, you know, outside Nahat, not Nahat. But congratulations. You deserve it. You're a great police officer and from a great family. Congratulations. Come on up, Chief. You get the clerk to swear you in?
We're going to do the, uh.
Roll call vote. Okay, motion's been made. Second it?
Yeah.
All those in favor, single by saying aye.
Josh Antrimai.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Richie Lombard, aye. Your name is vote. Congratulations.
I. I do say your name. I, state your name.
I, Stephen Schultz.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Massachusetts and all local ordinances, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of a Nahat policeman for the town of Nahat according to the law and best of my ability. Do so, swear.
I do.
Congratulations. Steve. Steve, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I mean that. Good, good guy. Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, John. Embarrassing? Yes. I'm just going to take a couple of minutes, as the chief did. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for all their support. Makes our jobs here in the department a lot easier. Tony, you've been a big help to us here at the department. I couldn't do my job without Chief Dwyer. He's been an unbelievable role model to follow. Hopefully, I can continue to follow his, his lead and, uh, and set a good example for everybody. Richie, congratulations. 40 years of service. Unbelievable. I, I too know, like everybody else here in this room, that you had the best wishes of the town at Hart anytime you made a decision. So, uh, the town's gonna, gonna suffer a little bit of a loss, but I, I think you've set a good example for, uh, the next person. You've left some big shoes to fill, but I think you've set a good example for those.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I'm very proud of you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, again, thank you to the Board of Selectmen and especially thank you to my wife and kids. They, I wouldn't be able to do this job and be here as much as I am without their support, so I thank them as well. Thank you.
You're next.
I can explain the next. Uh, you got, you, let me explain the next two that were on the agenda, and then we got one more event request. The next item on the agenda is the Lady Apple II. It's the abandoned vessel that sits on top of the wharf. We actually don't need to take a vote. Um, we were able to track down the original owner, got a bill of sale signed, and will be.
Give it to Richie?
Yeah, it's a, it's a parting gift.
No votes for me, you know.
So, um.
When I went out to drive the Kingfish II, I think they hired an extra 30 Coast Guard guys. I mean, they were, they were chasing us from Boston to the Promontion, I think. Uh, we had more laughs than that boat. God almighty. Anyways, go ahead.
So, so happy to report that will be off of the wharf, uh, very soon. Took a while to find, to track down the original owner.
You have somebody who can buy it? I mean, can we sell it to somebody?
It's really, uh, it, it ended up in Nahat because it fell apart while on its main voyage, uh, it fell apart off, off the coast of Nahat and floated in, so. We're, we're, we were able to track down the, the, the original owner of it, and it will be gone soon. Next on the agenda is the vote to approve the deficit spending budget for the month of July. We'll be pushing that to next meeting. We just have a couple last-minute adjustments that we have to make there. Um, this is because we are not having town meeting until September sometime. So we'll have to vote, uh, one month deficit spending plans for each month until town meeting. The department heads, our accountant Debbie Waters, uh, have been working around the clock. This is, this is new to all of us. And it's a lot of work, but, uh, we're, we're going to get it onto the agenda for Tuesday or Wednesday, whenever we have our next meeting next week. The next thing on the agenda is a, an event request. I'll let you guys get to that. And then lastly, that we're going to skip over as well, is the vote to approve the police union contract. Uh, we, we're in agreement, myself and the police union. It's just, again, just some last-minute legal tweaking of the language that I want to give them time to review, and I'll put it in front of the board for next week.
Did you, um, the, take care of the Public Works and the police and the fire too as well?
They're right, they're, they'll be right, right next on the list.
You, you gave them the 10%.
Yeah. Yes, uh, yeah. Yeah, it works out to 10.
Yeah. Before I came here, I got stopped on the causeway, you know, and the troops asked me, it wasn't the police, it was the Public Works. They wanted to make sure, you know, they, that I speak up and, you know. The people, the Public Works, they're good, they're happy though. I think they're very happy with what you gave them.
All three?
And the fire, and the fire. Am I, am I right, Chief, down there? I questioned you too, and you're shaking. Okay. What are the Public Works? The Public Works? Oh, there he is, right there. He told me to bring it up. He said, uh, he thought the.
See him giving you, I see him giving you winks.
Yeah, he, he thought the, the Public Works, of course, you know, get an extra 2%. I told him I discussed it off session.
Well, we're close. We're very close, and we hope to have that finalized, uh, very shortly before we get to the next fiscal year. All three unions should be, you know, commended for the work that they've been doing and especially through the hard times that the town has gone through. Before I came on as town administrator, they, they signed a one-year, 1% deal. This past year, weren't able to, um, get a, get a raise because of the financial situation of the town. And especially going into the impacts of coronavirus and the, and the unknowns of our future revenues. They're all been extremely cooperative and, you know, whatever we have to do, uh, for what's best for the town. So I commend all three of them, and, and we're close. We're very close to, to finalizing those.
Well, you know, the, the, not only all three unions, Fire, Police, and Public Works, they've done a great job for us. Anytime we've asked them to hold off for a year, and as we didn't have the money, we made a commitment to them that would take care of them down the road. And we've always made that commitment, and we have, and we took care of them because, uh, their expertise in this town is unbelievable. Not only doing their normal jobs and plowing and landscaping, but during the storms, they take care of the residents. People have flooded, uh, Sullis, Willow Road. You can see our fire department going down and pumping them all out. I was like, during the storm surges. It's unbelievable. They go above and beyond. All three unions. And, uh, I know one couple of years we had a holdup, but we promised them that we didn't have any money, but we'd make it up to them, and we have. We always kept our word. Uh, and, and, and it was true. And they've worked, they've worked with us very, very well, in my, since I've been on this board. And I wanted to thank all of the unions, Fire, Police, Public Works, and now the town hall staff too, working with us, with Tony too, because, uh, they've done an excellent job for you and the town, and they deserve, they deserve a lot of credit. I just wanted to put that in. Thank you.
So do you want to take the, take up the, um, event requests?
Sure.
Letter F. Little F?
Yep.
Page two, right? Where is it? I don't have that.
It's the next page up, one page more.
One more? Okay. This looks different. You're taking care of the, where is it? This is, um, to move to approve the event request for the congressional debate hosted by the Nahat Democratic Town Committee on August 5th, 2020 at the town hall at 5:00 PM. Motion? Yeah. For some reason, it's not in my book.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the congressional debate hosted by the Nahat Democratic Town Committee on August 5th, 2020 at the town hall, starting at 5:00 PM.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Further discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, single by saying aye.
Josh Antrimai.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Richie Lombard, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next.
That is it? I'll just, uh, I'll just quickly mention, under the town administrator report, that we had a sewer main break last week. Yet again, about a year, almost a year exactly to the last one. Um, our superintendent, Zach Taylor, uh, if you recall, his first day as superintendent, about a year ago, experienced a sewer main break, and we had one last week. But I'll say that it, um, him and his team, um, emergency management, police department, fire department, I mean, everybody, it, it was flawless, uh, the response. And they were done, um, they were done before sunup. I, I ended up having a, I ended up having to buy breakfast for the guys. I lost a bet on that one. So it worked out great. Um, it's unfortunate that we're continuing to have those issues. We are, uh, in the design, um, process of a repair to the sewer main to prevent those things from happening in the future. Hopefully, we have that job done in the fall, uh, at the end of the year, so I just wanted to report, um, that I appreciate everybody working together and, and how well it was repaired.
Zach, your team did an excellent job. That, I, I remember getting the call from Tony, of course, and I think it was, I don't know what time, it's six in the morning, 6:30 or something, woke me up. No, I was up, I was already finished my jog, but, um, your team did a great job. And then, and then I saw you a couple hours later, and it was unbelievable. And we've got a plan to replace that whole main, which would be good. We're going out to bid, and that should be done shortly. You won't have, continue having that problem because, you know, especially when it comes to sewer, you know, we don't want lowlands flooded, you know what I mean? But anyways, you did a great job, and your team did a great job, along with, uh, Renice. He was helping you there. Of course, he's a great, he's a great asset for the town. He's always, you call him, he's there. You know that. You, you can count on him. Great contractor. They did a great job. That was done quickly and, you know. The next, it was two or three hours later, you're trimming the entrance to the town. I saw you, I says, you didn't, you know, you were up all night. It was unbelievable. Your team should deserve a great credit. I give you a day off, like a Friday with your team, but I won't get it through, Tony. I, I, you know. Have to give the fire police too, because they, thank you.
That's all I have. That's all on, that's everything on the agenda.
Okay. One other thing, um, just wanted to, uh, thank Carol Nelson for stepping up as acting clerk over the last several months. You really jumped right into the frying pan, Carol, so. Great job. Yeah, good.
You're unbelievable, Gary. You did a great job. Going right in? Hey, listen, you did a fantastic job jumping right in. Yeah, that was great. And not much training either, so you really, it was on the job, and, and you did a fantastic job of that whole election and that whole thing. Went very smoothly. Thanks to you. I'll move for adjournment in a minute, but before we, uh, I just want to say a few words. I want to thank everyone, the citizens of the town, for electing me all these years and representing them. I've enjoyed it tremendously. I enjoy the town, I enjoy the people. And, uh, it was like unbelievable. Um, again, uh, I owe a lot of credit to my wife, Bonnie. She was the one that really pushed me, kept me in now straight, and I appreciate her very much. In fact, I want to invite you, she made tonight, she made, uh, we've got all kinds of sandwiches, lobster rolls and stuff back here by Kelly's. She made, she made the recommendation, and she brought it all, so she, please stay and enjoy it. Again, thank you very much. I thank you for the citizens of the town for electing me for all these years. I appreciate it. Good night, and God bless. I believe in one of my first election, I was over in Hawaii, and they were standing outside the, they kept asking, where's Richie? Oh, he's down, getting a cup of coffee. It was unbelievable. Yeah, you got me elected. But anyway, all the sandwiches are here and, uh, food and drinks. We've got drinks, drinks over there. Please help yourself.
All right, with less formality. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor, single by saying aye.
Josh Antrimai.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Meetings adjourned.